Very good. Welcome to the nine hundred seventh meeting of the board of directors of MFP in November twenty seven, roll call please. Keith Giondo.
Here.
Isabel Lozzi. Happy Fuller.
Here.
Luis Giondo. Leroy McKenzie.
Here.
Gary Sibley.
Here.
Sarah Axton.
Yeah.
Very good. Third order of business, public participation. Will you have one person sign up to get them in?
Only gonna take a couple of minutes. Had a long hard road here together. Working against each other, working with each other, working for each other. I really, really, really hope that after our meeting today, we have adopted the CDC recommendations. To go optional masking. Put this behind us. Not forget about it because we can learn from history, right? And our town is back open to full business, so please take that recommendation. Thank you.
Item three, under superintendent, A COVID nineteen transition plan.
I know I've shared this with the board, so I'm gonna try to go over it as quickly as possible. But I think in addition to adopting CDC guidance, which we, which we have the entire process, we've, we've adhered to the guidance. I think we could even take, take it a step further. So my proposal here not only has the new recommendations, but it also has some additional measures that I think we can take in order to in order to, to try to return a little bit more to normal than we had been for the past two years. So without further ado, first of all, on March two, the DHHS Mills administration did make that announcement that effective March nine, universal masking is no longer a recommendation, we should be moving to optional masking part of this guidance. So what does this include? It does include that, that optional masking piece. Where, you know, everyone is allowed to choose what they want with regards to masking. There are a few caveats that we'll, we'll discuss a little bit later. I, I will also add that I think we should also include the following consideration. Which is school outbreak, if we do reach school outbreak. Which is defined as fifteen percent or more of the students are out for COVID related reasons. We should have a period of five days of universal masking just to, to try to mitigate how many students and staff we have going out. And after a five day increment, we look to see if we're now below that fifteen percent threshold. And, and go back to optional masking, so that would be the only time that we're recommending some universal masking is if we do have an outbreak, and that's not for the district, it's just by school. So if there's an outbreak at this school, that does not impact for pen elementary, so on and so forth. We're going to have to make sure that we, we are taking care of those staff and students who want to continue to wear masks. There will be that population for staff. We will have some KN ninety-five masks available. This is just a little bit higher grade, it's not the medical grade where you need a fit test. But it is a higher grade, we did receive a good supply from the DOE, so we have those upon demand. And some folks are going to be a little more concerned because others will not be masking, they're going, want to want a better fitting mask, so we have those. Students, for parents who choose to have their children wear masks at school, the parents need to communicate your request to the teacher. Just like a parent requesting, I want my child to wear ski pants at recess, or I want my child to have, have a bag lunch instead of a school lunch, just communication with the teacher about what your desire is. The students will receive reminders by school personnel to the extent possible. Not everyone is going to be in the know of who is supposed to have a mask and who is not. So we'll do the best that we can, but I think it's important to say that students who do not comply with parent requests were will be referred back to the parent, the school is not going to be disciplining children who their parent want them, wants them to wear a mask, I think that's a, a child at a parent issue, it's not a school issue, and the school cannot get into trying to police optional masking or universal masking, I, I think that would be unfair for the, the school personnel. We're going to have some education in the upcoming days around around, you know, the power of choice, some people will be wearing masks, some people won't. And, and we will not be teasing, we will not be bullying, we will not be harassing those who choose one way or the other, we're not going to start this mask versus unmask in school type, you know, debate. We're just gonna try to highlight the, the core values around this, we're gonna respect everyone's choice, responsible of the family's preference, we'll be honest that when we test positive and we have to wear a mask for, for a period of time that we want to do that, and we're gonna try to remember that to engage and invest in our learning, not on what's on our face or not on our face. The school, the, on February twenty five, the, the announcement from the US CDC did remove the mandate to have masking on public transportation, so we are recommending that whatever we do in schools, which the recommendation right now is optional masking, we do optional masking on the buses as well. So it's, it's not different on the bus than it is in, in schools. Other relaxing measures that we'd like to, you to consider, that still keep us in line with the CDC recommendations. But it, it steps that we took above and beyond that we think it's time to scale back. Those temperature scanning units, when we walk in the morning, the ones that detect coffee in your hand. We, we'd like to put those away, put them in the nurse's office for, for the purpose of detecting fever for COVID or whatever reasons in the nursing office, but not having every student and staff scan when they come in. Unless we go back to an outbreak status, if we go back to an outbreak status, we would recommend to bring those back out and, and monitor that way. Water fountains, we have converted almost all of our water fountains to bottle filling stations. But we have put a cap on the actual fountain piece. It, it's safe now to remove those caps, if somebody wants a quick sip versus filling up a bottle, they, they'll have the option, quick sip. But we even have cup dispensers, so we can go right to the cup to the, we're, we're still gonna recommend you use the bottle filling stations, it's got an extra filter in it, so you know, it's probably better water, but we're gonna remove those, those red caps. School lunches, we're gonna try to do as much diagonal seating because three foot distancing is still a recommendation from the US CDC as we speak. So that distancing thing is still in place, but we can create three feet from diagonal seating that, that original one directional seating, never facing anyone. We need to get away from that, and, and we've already done a lot of that in our schools, so it's, it's, it's just more of what we've already been doing. And then providing, you know, some, some area of seating, if somebody has come out of, of COVID isolation. We do have to take into account that when they are unmasked, they need a little more distance, so we're going to account for that as well. School visitors, we'd like to open our doors again to visitors to the extent that we can, so volunteers, visitors in our schools and our classrooms, we'd like to, you know, welcome people back again. We would, we, we, that's going to be dispelled in the cafeteria, so I, I, I do know that lunches is a, is a wonderful time to come visit kiddos. It's hard to keep those three foot distancing when we have additional adults, so we'll be honest, as schools, when parents are asking to come visit or request to come volunteer, we'll just let you know if lunch is a possibility or not. But we're, we would like to welcome our visitors back. We'd like to have regular presentations and trips, so welcoming folks into our school to present as we have in the past, allowing our, our students to go on trips as they have in the past. We'd like to rent our buildings out again to outside groups and, and, and have those outside groups in our schools. We'd like to allow our staff to enter from the entrances that they had before COVID nineteen, now they're entering only where there's a, a scanning unit. We'd like them to park where they used to park and enter the building from where they used to enter, just for a little added flexibility. There are some things that have not changed that are still part of guidance. The guidance for isolation and quarantine still exists. So we have to adhere to that as, as it, as it appears in the SOP, the last SOP in Maine. The, it was, is the February sixteen version, we think one's gonna come out next week, which may change some things, but but right now we're following that isolation and quarantine recommendation, which is a five day isolation quarantine period. Return to school after five days if your symptoms are gone. With that being said, there is the masking mandate when you return from an isolation or a quarantine, so individuals who come back from a COVID infection or from a close contact who are, the close contacts a little bit different, it's only for unvaccinated folks, but you've got to mask for five days. So that's gonna be a challenge for us, it's gonna be a challenge for us to, I, you know, know who those folks are, but we're gonna try to do it to the best that we can. Keeping a running Google Doc with dates of, of return and making sure, we're just gonna, we're gonna ask the staff and students to just try to be honest about that as best they can, so that we're trying to limit the, the spread of potential virus. Contact tracing is, is a relaxed measure, in other words, it, it's to the extent possible is the language they have in the SOP. Our nurses are very honest that, right, you know, it's, it's very difficult these days because we're not getting the full picture a lot of times, so we're gonna focus on family dynamics, if we have, you know, a, a family with siblings in the school, but we're gonna try to just do our contact tracing with, within the family unit as, as much as we can. Physical distancing, I mentioned before, it's still three feet. To the extent possible, especially if you're unmasked for more than fifteen minutes. Outdoors is still wide open, so there are no, there are no layered strategies for outdoors, outdoors is, is, is is like, like it always was before COVID, so that's good. We'll try to promote outdoor classrooms as soon as it's not below zero, and, and we can try to do that, so maybe that last week of school in June, that will happen. Sports, we're still, we're still going to defer to the MPA to give the guidance that they believe is right, we're, we're done the indoor sports this winter, so we're moving to outdoor sports this spring. So it should be relatively painless there because softball, tennis, baseball are outdoor sport and track are outdoor sports. We're still going to ask sick people to go home when they're sick. That's not a COVID thing, that's forever and ever, once in schools have been, schools, we ask sick people to go home or stay home. And we are still promoting pool testing, pool testing lost its effectiveness when there was so much virus. Because, you know, it seemed like everybody was testing positive, every pool was, was a positive pool. Now it's back to minimal positivity, so I think we had one positive pool here at CHS yesterday, I think. I know my pool was, was, was the one, so. So it's back to having an effectiveness, plus it also keeps unvaccinated folks out of a required quarantine if they're in pool testing. So if you're unvaccinated, you're a close contact and you're in pool testing, you can stay in school. And then a, a further recommendation from our school nurses, it is supported by the SOP, but in the SOP it does say recommended, and we all know that recommended is not mandated, our nurses would like to promote a, a negative test to return from your isolation, so after your five day isolation, you wanna come back on day six. Which you can, all we're asking is for a, a negative test, we'll do one right here, so it's not like we're both sending you out, we'll accept the Walgreens, we'll accept the St. John Valley RX, the Northern Maine, we'll accept those, but we can do them right here as well. And that's just peace of mind that you, you are ready to return and you're not going to spread the virus. Although the recommendations in this, in this transition plan do not put us back to normal all the way. They put us in a, in a wonderful step in the right direction, so we hope the board can consider our recommendations as a total package as I presented in this transition.
Question? Yes, Leroy? So I'm gonna start from the back, since Jerry there.
Yep.
On the return from isolation quarantine testing. What, I don't see any protocol here for the, if, if somebody actually has tested positive. What are we doing, because obviously, I mean, they can't come back to school with a a negative test if they're probably not gonna test negative for, what is it, ninety days, I believe, still test positive. So what are, what implementation is there for somebody that tests positive? Stays home, I mean, what if they need to come back?
So, so the, the antigen test is, is the test that we're, we're recommending to come back, and that's because the antigen test does detect after, i- i- it's only an effective test when you have symptoms and, and you're, you're, you actively have the virus. In theory, in fact, it tests more negative than it does positive, so it's highly likely that we are gonna get those negative results. But it, because the CDC guidance says that you can return on day six to ten if no symptoms exist. We're, you're, you're left to the, the, the individual, A, being honest or not, we'd just like the peace of mind of having that test.
And then under the optional masking. Is there a specific reason why we have to have an automatic trigger? When it comes to the fifteen percent of the school? Is that not something that we could call a meeting to, should we have that rather than having an automatic trigger?
We could, my fear is that we're, we're going to, we're, we're going to be prompted to have meetings regularly, often, to just look at data that's going to be exactly this, right, so I, I'll sit before you, I'll say, okay, we're above fifteen percent. And then we'll, we'll all go, okay, so what do we do with this fifteen percent or twenty percent, whatever we are. I, I would rather we set that limit, outbreak status was defined at, for a reason. And I, the school nurses, they consulted with the school nurses, we felt like that was a, a good natural trigger to just say, okay, let's mask up for a period of five days, we'll see if the, the virus goes through the school and then return. So that was the only reason, it was to have something as a measure to say, this is when we go back to optional, to universal masking. Because school data is always more accurate than a county designation color or a US CDC map that, that looks at, you know, things that are probably two weeks old. We felt like real time school data is, is really more valuable.
Okay. So under the, which would be the next page.
Okay.
Right there. Okay, so I'm actually okay with the, the staffing, the masks available. My question is, is that under the next section where it says students. Shouldn't this be more of a parent policy, like you've said?
Yeah.
I mean, is that something that we actually need our educators, our teachers to, you know, interact with them on, on the students on that, I mean?
What, what I, what I would propose is, once you all adopt this. If you adopt this, we would send out education to the parents on what optional masking needs and what the parent responsibility for that is versus what the school responsibility is. I think parents need to know that we are not going to be the mask police for them. It's just not fair for our staff.
I guess a lot of the, a lot of the concerns that I've heard from our teachers is that they feel that they've moved to be mask police.
Yeah.
Rather than, and I mean, that takes away from the time that they have to, you know, teach what they're supposed to be.
The only thing that our staff will concern ourselves with moving forward, if you adopt this, is do we have students teasing, bullying each other because of masking, and I think that's our responsibility to watch out for, but we will no longer say, hey, you're supposed to have a mask, hey, you're not supposed to, it's too much for our staff to, to try to control.
And then going along with the, the core values and the option, the, there you go. Isn't that something that could be done in that same reference, in that same information packet that you sent home? Or maybe during a periodic, periodically through a morning announcement?
Absolutely.
Or something rather than delaying the, in that, in the inevitable here?
Yeah, no, wha- wha- whatever, whatever we decide to do here, all I wanted to press upon the board is that we would like to make sure that we are communicating that we're, we're gonna be respectful of one another no matter what. How we do that is, is really is gonna be up to the schools, how they disseminate that to their students.
Sure, that's just the last question.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Ben, I think you did a really good job bringing that together. It's actually a lot more lenient than what I thought you were probably gonna come up with. The only thing I really don't like is like Leroy said about the automatic trigger. They haven't worked well for us in the past, anything with use for. That would be my own, my only consideration would be to maybe change that language to something that triggers board meeting and not automatic universal masking.
I think all along we've had some sort of trigger, and, and yeah, sometimes they're not. I mean, last year it was, remember we had the, how many, depending on how many cases, and there was times where it was like there were six active cases today, which would have triggered it, but tomorrow there's gonna be three. So I, I feel, and, and so the decision was made, so like, well, we're not gonna go remote because of, for one day. I think that makes sense, I mean, and we're not talking about going remote, we're talking about masking for five days until we can get over the hump to try to minimize that need for it getting to the point where we have to do things that are more extreme, I, I agree, I think this is good.
I would be comfortable with saying simply, i- i- unless the US, unless the main CDC changes their guidance, then just stick with whatever the main CDC says. And not having a, a, a school trigger. I defer to the board, I'm just going based on what is comfortable with, with, with our, with our, our staff that reviewed this. And it was based on, on some of the recommendations that were made in some other St. County schools, and that's kind of what we.
Yeah, I, I, I think, I think that having that trigger is, is a good thing, and then if we need to, if it doesn't make sense, I mean, then we can meet and be like, okay, well, this trigger doesn't make sense for something, but we were talking about the main CDC. It's the US CDC that puts out that new guidance with the new colors now, the low, medium and high.
Yeah.
Which we just went back to medium last night, it's only high that it was kind of confusing reading that piece as far as it was the recommended masking, but
So when we met with Dr. Shaw, what's the date, so we met, met with Dr. Shaw Wednesday. Most of Maine was in red still, and the question did come up is, how could Maine be recommending optional masking? Yeah, optional masking when we're all in red and the US CDC says, red means you shouldn't mask. And he was, he was pretty good about explaining how that is delayed data on the US CDC map. And it's health-based centers and how they figure that out, now it's based on hospital bed capacity. And so i- it all, to, to my understanding, almost looks like you're, you're a couple of weeks out of what it really is, which is probably why we changed to yellow last night. So I, I think, I think the Maine CDC has a good bead on what's happening in Maine, they're using wastewater testing, they're using that hospital bed capacity. They're using test positivity rates, I, I really think that the Maine CDC is gonna be, should be our guide. Regardless of what the color happens on the US CDC map, I think Maine will respond correctly based on that.
And they're the ones, well, then the DOE are the ones that came up with the fifteen percent for an outbreak.
It's the CDC, the Maine CDC, yeah, and then that's always been their, their benchmark for outbreak before COVID.
Yeah.
So if we had fifteen percent of our students out for, for for Beesels, then it would be an outbreak, so it's, they went to that same measure.
I guess, I don't have a preference, or a strong preference one way or the other, but would it not make sense maybe, instead of having the trigger at fifteen percent to, say at ten percent, have the conversation, like our numbers are going up, can we, that way we're not waiting till we're at fifteen. And then we're scrambling to make a meeting time, well, it's hard, so I just think maybe at ten percent we have the conversation, hey, our numbers are looking like they're going up. Can we look to schedule a meeting to discuss this further? I guess that would be a suggestion.
Well.
I don't, I don't see a big deal with having a trigger because we've never followed them before. We've always deviated grossly from them. When we approach a trigger, whether it be for this or for something else, we if it looks like it's gonna come back down again, the administration's always kind of been like, well, we're not gonna bother, and that's fine, I really don't care about that, but I think, but I think having a meeting every time we do this is a giant waste of our time. But I, I don't work.
I, I think, I think it's plenty there. From what I understand, if the fifteen percent trigger takes effect, we're doing it, so we're considered universal masking school. Which is gonna allow the close contact students to stay in school, especially through school testing program that are not that. So I'm okay with fifteen percent, I think we need to be real careful about being real nitpicking about some of these things. And we need to let administration do their job and bring us their recommendations. I'm not looking to drag this out any longer, but any of you folks, I just wanna have this behind us. So I'm okay with this transition plan and presentation. You looking for a motion?
Sorry, Izzy, do you have any?
I'm sorry, I apologize.
That's fine. Um. I just find that sometimes it triggers, like you said, like one day you can have six and the next day you'll have three, like cases. I guess that, that is just kind of, and since we're kind of a small school, like that fifteen percent isn't necessarily a lot of cases, so like Sarah was saying, whenever you have one, one day and it's six, the next day it's three, that's the only problem that I have with those, like automatic triggers.
Fifteen percent of our school population is fifteen percent.
Right, right.
So I mean, it, it's, it's pretty high, we didn't come close to that this year, I mean, we, we were up forty, you know, forty at the worst, so I think we were.
So this school never got an outbreak status this year, it never happened, for pen elementary did once. So it, an outbreak status is, is rare, and, and it was, it was, it was eminent when we saw a huge spike. Honestly, I, I think that if, if a new variant of the virus comes out that would put us in the potential of having an outbreak status. I, I think the main CDC would change their recommendations anyway. I think, I don't think we're gonna see outbreak status with the levels at the, at Maine saying, okay, we'll move, I'm being very honest.
I would actually, I mean, given that light, I would have, I would actually be okay with fifteen percent. I would like to see it changed to be effective today rather than the ninth. I don't really see a purpose in dragging out, once again, like I said, what's gonna happen. Might as well put it in effect today and be done with it. Sure that we would have a, a lot of happy people.
I completely understand where you're getting at, the color coding change today, everybody's ready to just hit them and just fling them. The only, the only problem, it's not really a problem, it's just a matter of policy, simple policy. And if everybody here on the board votes unanimously to change a motion as laid out in the agenda, we can change that, but right now the next motion on a new business, which we haven't discussed yet. That motion would probably have to fail, and then we'd have to introduce a new motion.
That's a recommended motion, please, correct. Are we ready for a motion?
Can I, can I just, before you guys start, I, I, I totally agree as well. In fact, I would say yesterday instead of today, if I could, but I, I do wanna just be, I wanna, I wanna be mindful of the families that need to wrap their minds around this and how they're going to educate their own children about, we, we want you to be wearing your mask. So I, I would at least say, wait till Monday, if you're gonna make any changes, wait Monday, that's the only thing I would recommend, just so that we're not here at school today and the kids are already on buses and they haven't had a chance to talk with mom and dad. And, you know, we, some kids are ripping their mask off and some are not, I just would rather families have at least, at least a day to talk about it. And, you know, we, some kids are ripping their mask off and some are not, I just would rather families have at least a, at least a day to talk about it. That's the only thing I'm concerned with. I thought you.
I I agree with that. That. I think doing it today, I mean, my. There's kids going, getting almost getting stolen, so I feel like that's not really fair to families.
Yeah, I dropped my daughter off before I came here.
So. What I'm, what I'm, what I'm gathering is, from what you're saying, is there'll probably be masks, I don't say mask confusion. But some of the little kids who've been wearing their masks and they understand where they're wearing their masks. They just come to school, all of a sudden the teachers, the staff, everybody explains to them what's going on today. And let's give the parents a chance to do that with their children, and then come in Monday. If the board, so we decide.
Been dealing with masks for two years. The majority of kids, once they leave this building, do not wear a mask, they don't mask at the ski toe, they don't have masks anywhere else. Those kids that the parents want them masked are very clear, the parents want a mask because they're wearing them at the swamp park, they're wearing them at Pat's Pizza, they're wearing them everywhere else. So I think to delay any more than today is ridiculous. School districts all across the state are going effective immediately. March ninth, March seventh, it's all throwing darts. We've dealt with this, this isn't something that happened.
I I don't, I don't think it's fair to make them. Policy change in when schools are, you know, when in the middle of a day. I think if this mean, if this mean had been last night and at least had the parent, kids have left their homes, I I don't, I don't think that's fair. I I I wouldn't.
I don't think it's fair, we had to fight, oh, we'd be in an emergency meeting, so. We're ready for a motion.
Okay, so first of all, we're still under the superintendent item COVID nineteen transition. And we have a motion to accept the COVID nineteen transition plan as presented.
Well, I'd just like to make a note, like, why, the the new business is the motion to adopt the main CDC's recommendations and the MSAD twenty seven transition plan. Are we moving, which one are we moving for?
Well. This is a. Under superintendent, usually I just present things, you guys don't take any. So I think what we, I go to the school's business.
Very good.
Oh, I see, sorry.
Under new business.
Yeah.
Do we have a motion without the main CDC recommendation and the MSAD twenty seven transition plan as presented effective March nine thousand twenty two? We have a motion. Being nine. Motion failed. Would somebody like to make them another motion?
I would make a motion to adopt the main CDC recommendations and the MSAD twenty seven transition plan as presented effective immediately.
We have a second.
I'll second.
Leroy seconds it. Any further or any discussions regarding immediate implementation of the optional masking policy?
It's two issues. Well, I'm not even gonna talk about the immediate, that doesn't, like, I'm with Sarah on that, I don't. I think it's foolish to do something this quickly. Um, because we're, it's literally one school day. But I wanna point out that I. When we received the transition plan. Yesterday. One of my concerns here is the transition plan, the MSAD twenty seven transition plan. Main CDC hasn't renewed its plan officially yet, there's some stuff that came out of the governor, but there there's no new plan. How are we gonna handle when main CDC's plan contradicts our transition plan? Because they're two distinct plans.
So the only thing that the main CDC is holding off on is data coming out of the February break. To support the recommendation they made Wednesday. So I think, given the fact that all counties have moved to yellow effective yesterday, proves that those numbers are declining. Um, we see it in our schools, so the main CDC is not going to come out with um. With 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 other revisions of any plan, they'll have a new SOP that might have more restrictions, but. We've never come to the board level for you to approve an SOP, that's something we just have to follow. So um, I I think the only thing the main CDC is waiting on was those that dated to support the announcement they made on Wednesday. And that's what we're looking for.
Okay, well, I guess it just seems like it would have made more sense to either follow the main CDC's recommendations or the MSAD twenty seven transition plan. Because we're, we're opening the door for there to be two contradictory parallel plans. Because we have two, we're adopting two plans by one motion.
Let me, oh, I see, it does include the transition plan, it's worth.
So.
So if we, if we were to remove the transition plan, we'll allow administration. The flexibility would adjust that as needed, because it might be moving currently.
So the only thing in this, in this transition plan, and the reason that we've called it that is because we have, we are, we are telling you guys that we're recommending relaxed measures. Temperature scanning units, water columns, these are not things that the main CDC made us do. These are just things that we'd like to roll back on because. I'm tired of seeing kids waiting at the door to scan their forehead when I don't think we got a single fever in two years on those scanners. So those, these are the things that I'm just trying to show you in this plan, so we don't have to call it a plan, we can just call it whatever, but um, I'm fine with it. I I'm just letting you guys know, this is what we we'd like to do.
Okay, so it's really just, it's all about the word, right? Because the original motion has transition plan as presented. If we take as presented out of a future motion. That gives administrative team the ability. To adapt to whatever's thrown at them.
I agree.
And that can change on a daily to weekly basis or monthly, and we don't wanna be meeting, having meetings every other day.
My concern is that we end up in a situation, because these are two distinct recommendations, the transition plan is a recommendation. We don't wanna put ourselves in a position where we're having to deal with the fact they diverge, which they could, things change so often. I mean, we've had to deal with this crazy stuff for the past two years, and I don't want us to have, be in a position where we have two conflicting plans.
So, so can I amend my motion?
Actually, the first one died, oh, it didn't. Why don't the.
I have a.
You had a second on it, so we.
Can I make a comment for you? Because if we do that, if we just go to the main CDC's recommendation, the recommendation to move to optional masking is March nine. So if we just follow their recommendation, right, we are masking until March nine.
That's the recommendation.
That's the recommendation.
And I'm okay with removing uh any motion to accept the transition plan, it's an administrative plan, so we're administratively, we're just gonna put that plan in action. Because it's not against any guidance that we received from the main or US CDC, so I'm okay.
Honestly, Ben, that's the best part of the whole motion, is the transition plan. It truly is. So can I amend my motion?
Or.
And make the motion to adopt the current main CDC recommendations in the MSAD twenty seven transition plan effective immediately.
There's, thank you for that one for a second. Any further discussions?
It inherently is broken, the CDC's recommendation is March nine.
Right.
So we are breaking, we in in adopting it, we are breaking it.
So would it make sense to remove motion to adopt the MSV transition plan as presented?
Well, no, it's the CDC part, CDC's recommendation is March nine, so we can't say we're gonna follow the CDC's guidelines. And then in the same motion violate the CDC's.
But if you remove the main CDC recommendation from that, you just hold with the MT number twenty seven transition plan?
Which is based on the main CDC.
But, right.
Yeah.
What's added in here?
And Ms. Lozen?
Oh, everything.
Yeah. How do, how? I don't know how we, how. You get out of the.
Okay, how about if you, how about if you motion to accept the main CDC's March nine recommendations effective immediately?
Well, I feel comfortable with it Monday.
Well, or Monday.
Well, we we have a motion on the floor. Let's take that motion, we're gonna start over with a clean slate. All those in favor of Gary's motion, that and Leroy's second. Go hands, all four. Four, four. Any opposed?
I think we should wait till Monday.
Motion passes. Back to me.
I don't, I don't, I still don't understand how that, if the CDC currently says. That masking must optional on March nine, I don't know how you take off masks today, we just. If we said that we're gonna do that, starting right now. That recommendation isn't effective until. Till Wednesday, so we're still masking.
So I'll make another motion. To do the exception of their implementation date.
Already passed.
So why are we continuing to talk about?
Well, because, I think Gary, because it's a legal, we we created a. We passed a motion that on its face is. Violates itself. We buy, we, when I suppose, I guess on some level nobody cares. But it's, I think it's problematic when we're. I mean, I'm just gonna say, we're having emergency meetings to pass motions that don't even logically follow themselves.
All right, so we need to take a step back. Derek, would you like to make a motion to rescind the previous motion that passed? Once we get that cleared, then we can enter into a proper motion. Just the motion.
The following students, please report to the senior room. Emerson Bois, Lauren Froh, Sadye Tarn, Vera Kelly, Sadie, Sarah Labby, Kaylee Netto, Connor Pelletier, Ethan Freeman, Nathan Townsend, Connor Bissin, Nathan Bissin, and Logan Wood.
So I have a question, based on the motion that just passed. To follow main CDC's recommendation. Effective immediately, does that mean masks come off today or? Or or not, because those, like, that's what you're saying, those are two different things, the CDC's recommendations. We were, we're saying we're gonna follow them starting immediately, and the recommendation is to unmask on Wednesday.
I'll make a motion to rescind my motion.
A second.
Very good. All in favor?
I don't even know.
So basically, what we're doing, we're.
But if I didn't, if I didn't vote on that, do I, on the original one?
If we pass Gary's, we pass Gary's original motion. We we decided.
Yeah, I didn't know if I could vote on a rescinded motion that I didn't vote for in the first place, that was my question.
As a matter of making it all that way.
So I'm gonna make a motion to.
All in favor of rescinding that motion?
Come again.
I'm gonna make a motion to adopt the main CDC recommendations in the MSAD twenty seven transition plan. With the exclusion of the implement, implementation date of March nine. Make it effective immediately.
Seconded by Larry, uh, Leroy, sorry. Not yet. Uh, any further discussion?
Just, just so you all know, we're, we're not going to be making any huge announcements in schools, we'll, we'll let parents communicate with their children. Um, so that's just, that's just for for uh peace of mind, thanks for that, you know. I'm I'm less concerned about this building, I'm more concerned about the elementary building. But it's not gonna be like a big unmasking ceremony. Oh, there will be somewhere.
Very good, any further discussions? All in favor? Any opposed?
I still think we have the problem.
Is there a need to have a meeting next Monday? Or can we delay for a couple of weeks to see how this all goes, and then uh I I'm proposing Tuesday, March fifteenth or Wednesday, March sixteenth?
Good day, too.
I don't think I'm around, but that's.
Tuesday.
Tuesday. Okay, so I'll I'll send a, I'll send a notice Tuesday.
March sixteen.
All right, most of you are, Leroy, seconded, Algal, all in favor? Very good.
This is a happy kid. Okay.